We're gonna go to public audience. I have Joan Coe and Susan Messina. So Joan, if you'd like to come up, we'll set up our timers for you.
Joan Coe, 26 Wickham Drive. The taxpayers can no longer support this continued escalation in spending for special education. It is time to have a taxpayers' revolution until there is an appropriate model developed that would address cost containment. Special education spending has exploded over the years with no stops in place for controlled spending. The model that is used for allocation of funds is archaic with no controls in spending. The support services for special education have gained the system with escalating courts for service. The model must be changed with the state developing a model for funding special education. Attorney General should immediately issue an injunction on all spending for special education. The state under the direction of the Attorney General should be charged with regulating all expenditures with a cap for special education services. Fixed costs should be regulated by the state with all support groups applying for a permit to network into the system. The ones accepted to supply services should report quarterly on their accomplishments and supply input to tweak the system to continue improving on the model. Those who do not meet the requirement will not receive permits and will not be allowed to supply services. Hospitals should be expanded to increase services at a fixed cost. All costs above the regulated expenditures should be absorbed by the parents on an income-based model. Placing all services under the state, there would be shared services that reduce costs. Satellite state departments throughout the state would allocate services to special education. The state has the power of the purse and should use it to place fixed costs on all services for special education. Purchasing a commercial building in Two Farms Village Road that is overpriced to use as a school is costly. There is no rush to purchase the building. It has been vacant for over three years. Repurposing the building with classrooms and elevated security furniture, heating, and classrooms are costly. Tasking the owner of the property to absorb some of the tasks of painting the building and reconfiguring the offices into classrooms to reduce the cost will not save to spend. The owners of the building will have to comply with their requirements for the purchase of the building, leading to unattainable tasks and unknown costs that will become a sale breaker. Presentation by the Board of Education in the town for a project not to exceed 1.4 million is budgeted to carry chicanery with fuzzy math with the end justifying the means. Wrapping special education around the purchase of a building will not produce any different outcomes special education provides in the present configuration of services. The cost will escalate until a different model is adopted to cap costs for services. We cannot continue spending on a failed model for funding special education and expect a different outcome. At the present time, there is a deficit of $800,000 in the grant list. All spending should be reduced as our revenues are diminished. There should be a moratorium on spending with no increases to 2025 budget. The present budget has a CNR appropriation, $30,000 for an equity audit that should be removed. All DEI diversity, equity, inclusion, funding practices in the schools and government should be eliminated as it is discriminatory and unconstitutional. The federal government has mandated all businesses remove DEI from hiring practice and regulations. Federal funds will be withheld if this practice continues. DEI is dead as a mechanism for discriminatory practices in the town. Should eliminate government-sponsored groups associated with the DEI movement. It appears the pickable courts of Carapul Court have been delayed by FEMA to satisfy the requirements. The building's six courts, two are in the floodplain and the other four in the floodway. However, in my conversation with a FEMA employee on February 7, 2025, I was told that four courts, cement rebar's could be built and ready for late spring. We discussed the alternatives and it was concluded that the cement courts with the appropriate use of funds, four courts in a floodway requires less stringent approvals. To get approved for construction, the town must provide a no-rise analysis for the construction of the cement courts that will last for years. The rush to construct asphalt courts that will heave in a year is spending good money for a bad project. The town received $350,000 for offer funding to construct pickable courts with cement rebar. Not wasted on inferior asphalt courts that will not last. The taxpayers have similar judgment on the allocation of funds. It took all my time if we placed this in the back.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
Thank you. Susan?
Good evening. Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. I'm here about the minutes again with two ideas. I didn't read the minutes for tonight, so it's not about that. But in order to make sure that we don't have missing or misrepresented minutes, we can really just use, there's not that many people talking. We could use just the transcript of what we get on SCTV. That's why we have this technology. And then someone could listen to the transcript even at twice the speed and just correct inaccuracies. And I think it would be fair to append that as the full content in the minutes. And the other thing, I was gonna actually send a note about this today, but I ran out of time, so I came here instead. I think it would also be fair to append after the minutes what correspondence people send into the town about issues because nobody knows what anyone else is thinking about. And I've been thinking about this a lot related to the Charter Revision Committee and looking at the town charter. And if you look at the town charter, the first part of the town charter says the town, capital T, is us. It's all of us inhabitants. And you can't have a good town if people don't know what other people are thinking. You don't have the courage to discuss and debate issues. You don't know what people are writing to you about. We never hear anything back. We're not sure what's going on. And without a newspaper, your meeting is the historical record for the town. This is a sacred responsibility. So I'm asking for those two things. They're free. And would go a long way to keeping people informed and people being able to discuss issues and understand what's going on. I also have to add in my little brainy thing, so.
I have it in my first line, Mr. Plank.
Thank you. We are having our next Music Monday on the first Monday of the month at March 3rd. It is "A Thing Called Dave." Variety of styles, super fun, casual setting, incredible acoustics if you want to check it out. And the other thing that caught my eye was I saw there was a lot of improvements proposed for Curtis Park. And I was concerned about the lights because I'm concerned about light pollution. It's a very dark area. And then someone contacted me about turf fields. Of course, turf fields have their complications and chemicals and maintenance and all that kind of stuff. And then I heard that it was some kind of public-private partnership. And I just wanna say, I'm not against soccer. My son plays soccer. I'm not against mostly anything except for a few kind of really un-good things. But I don't know if anyone's aware that we actually had a referendum about a sports complex a number of years ago that was put forth by a citizen's petition and it was turned down. And I really think that if we're going to invest this amount of money, which I think triggers, if you put together all the costs, triggers a referendum threshold, we should make sure that this is what the town wants or this is where it wants and consider all the problems we have with a more holistic lens. So that's, that's my comments. Thank you, Susan.
Okay, so let's move along here. I'm gonna ask for a motion for the consent agenda to include action items A and D and appointments A and B. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Couple of things before we start the budget. Oh, well, it's for selectman's report, so include these here. One thing I wanted to talk about, Tom Roy's here. So I would like to ask for consensus from the board. I just wanted to acknowledge that Tom's been nominated for one of the top 10 Public Works Leaders of the Year Award. It is a national designation, so it puts Simsbury on the map. I know we're on the map, but more on the map. And so I'm asking if the board would give consensus to put together a letter signed by all of us to submit for Tom to try to help get him over the finish line there. If you guys would agree and be in favor doing that.
I'll make that motion.
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just to add to that, if you have any additional things that you'd like included in it, just send them to me and we can include them in the letter.
I think Tom was past president of the New England Chapter for the American Public Works Association as well. Should make sure to include that and his long service here in town, so.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. Okay, so, so good for that. And then one other thing I wanted to clear up before I get into it. Was pointed out that our executive session wasn't clarified as to actually needed a little bit more detail. So I reached out to the town attorney. Oh, thank you.
Your time is up.
Your time is up.
I'm dying for that one.
Are we done? And I just wanna ask to modify the agenda item. It says for the purpose of discussing the process for the town annual, Town Manager's Annual Performance Review and to include initial performance discussions.
I'd say that we can add that in our motion when we make the motion to go into executive session.
Okay, so we don't have to do it now. I just, okay, fine.
I think that's fair.
Good idea. Okay, so then I'm done, except for my town manager's report. I'm just gonna, not my town manager's report, for selectman's report. It's been a long week, everyone. I just wanna acknowledge.
What?
It's Monday.
Oh, gosh.
It's the Monday is Monday.
So it's really been a long week. Just wanna acknowledge Black History Month and encourage everybody to do some homework. I included a link here that links to a lot of cultural information, achievements and excellence. I include the budget process in here. I do have some wording from the Open Space Committee on the invasive species removal, I promise, and also on the Grange events. And I think that's all. I would like to mention that the Lieutenant Governor stopped by, was it last week, Mark? Or two weeks ago? I think it was two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, it's gone fast. To, to ask us to participate in a veterans event for Vietnam veterans and Korean veterans. So we're gonna work with Amy and Francine to get the numbers for that. And then there's also gonna be a World War II statewide event on May 19th at the Armory to honor living World War II veterans. So I just wanted to call that out here. And that's all I am going to, except for the food pantry relocation, which I think everybody knows about and somebody else is probably gonna mention it up here at 4:00 PM. So with that, I am going to turn it over to our town manager for the 26th budget.
Thank you, Wendy. Thanks, everybody. Good evening. Before we get started, just a few housekeeping items. You know, this was, as the board knows, but not everybody at home knows, we are in the process of converting from a manual budget process over to our new automated system brought to you by ClearGov. Want to thank this board for funding that in a prior budget year. Our original goal was to get into the CIP and CNR side of the budget and then defer operating to next year. We got a little ahead and we were able to use the system for operating for the first time. As with any new system, a couple of bugs. We've been reported that we're having trouble printing the PDF. For a few of you that are looking for the printed copies, that ticket is open with IT support at ClearGov. And also, we've discovered a quirk with those using Macs with respect to opening the Excel sheet wide enough to see the actual number. We could probably put an example up there, but you're all familiar with this, where you get the little pound signs instead of the actual number. So those have been reported. We're working on it. We've tried to clear up the formatting as best we can. And for those of you waiting for budget books, we'll keep you closely updated on that. So just a word on the process before we get into the deck. I think, as you know from your meeting last, from your last meeting, we got into the CNR, the capital non-recurring part, and the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, which is that portion of our annual budget that we bond for every year. And wanna thank those of you, most of you I think were able to work with our team, our budget team, to get some ranking and prioritization done early this year. So thank you very much for that. A lot of the things that you put as your priorities made it into the budget because of that work, so thank you very much. Also, we're presenting the budget a little early this year. Last year, I was in front of you February 26th. Today, I'm in front of you February 10th at the request of the Board of Finance Chair and others who suggested that the community could use more time and you could use more time for your review. And I think that's, that was very wise. We're glad that we were able to do that. And I wanna thank our budget team. Most of our department heads are here. I won't introduce them all, but we'll just mention quickly Tom Fitzgerald, my deputy, Amy Meriwether, our finance director, and Melissa Appleby, our budget director, along with all of our department heads have worked with us for a couple of months now and with you to get this done. With that, we're just gonna walk through the deck and then we're gonna take some questions. Hit the first slide if you could. So a little bit different this year. I'm gonna put the money slide up first and then we're gonna bring it back later as we ask you for some questions. But we don't want everybody to have to wait for 22 minutes while we go through some of the big, big numbers. We think that this is a better approach. Take you right down to the lower right. You'll hear some, a lot of conversation about this leading up to your approval, hopefully on or immediately after February 24th. You'll see that 3.38% number. That's net expenditures, that net of new revenue. That is the amount by which the town budget as proposed would be increasing. We have been fighting to keep that under, under five, under four. And the, the ask was to keep it under three, it's close to two. You know, you, you work very hard with respect to that number because that is driving the cuts that you're gonna hear about tonight. And much of the work that the budget team has done has been centered around getting that number as low as possible. And then you'll see towards the, a little later, what the impact is, or maybe on the next slide, you could go ahead. Yeah, so in keeping with getting the, the good and the bad news out quickly, this is what the average, as proposed, the average increase would be to taxpayers. The mill rate would increase to 33.56 excluding the fire district. And again, we'll back into these numbers, but just so you can see it right at the top. And the average taxpayer based on that average valuation of the median single-family home of $3,9800 would be facing a prospective tax increase of $356 per year. Next slide. So this is a little small. We did try to blow it up and we won't spend a lot of time on it, but I wanted to put it in there just for the record and this will also all be posted online tomorrow morning. This is a comparable list over the last six fiscal years of what the tax increase has been. And I just draw your, your attention to the bottom of this and jump down to the average. This is comparing Simsbury, Farmington and Avon. And you can see that all proximate to each other in the two to three. Farmington is a little higher. And you can see it broken down by years. We'll also have data available to show you which were reval years if you're interested in that. But you could see our average relative to our peers over the last six years. Next slide. This is just a standard pie chart. Again, a little hard to see here, but there is a point to this that I wanna make a little bit more clearly than we did last year. And you'll see it as well in your packets and in the budget itself. Blue is, is representing tax revenue and as a, as a percentage, sorry, of expenditures, education. And you can see all the breakdown of the various pieces there. And on your electronic versions, you can actually zoom in. Next slide. Here, here is the breakdown of that expenditure. Again, the blue is 69.42 on education, our debt service costs. I know many of you have asked questions. Some of you have asked some questions about the rise in debt service costs, particularly the impact of the Latimer School Project and, and other things. We've, we've given each of you answers to, to those questions. And debt service is something that we'll be talking more about over coming weeks as the, as the budget moves through the adoption process. What I will say quickly on this is, is that the, anything that is on the CNR, the capital non-recurring, is obviously cash for capital and therefore we want to, if we can, increase that, that category of the budget because it is best practice to purchase the equipment and do your renovations as much as you can by use of cash. The, the single biggest impact we can have on our operating budget, I think, as a board is, is to do what you can to cut debt service. Our Board of Finance is very keenly aware of that, as is our finance team. And you'll recall, I think the public will recall, that last year, the Board of Finance issued guidance that was very important to our budget adoption process last year. And essentially what they said was you can borrow a maximum of $10 million every two years or $5 million a year or three and seven, or however this board wants to do it. That guidance that we got from the Board of Finance was critical, not only to our process last year, but it, it really informed some of the decisions that we made as we put this proposal in front of you. And I know you've been keenly aware of it as well. But just a word on that, that as you reduce, even if it's temporary, the bonding limit and the goal again is to reduce debt service, which we get. But as you do that, if you simultaneously don't support CNR, what you're doing is you're pushing pretty much everything into the out years. There becomes a point in time, and I'll, I'll conclude with this later, where you reach a tipping point. And you start to hear from department heads that you're deferring things a little too long. And when you do that, you have two impacts that are negative. One is assuming cost increases in the rate of inflation. It's gonna cost us as a town a lot more to do that roof three years from now than it would to do it now. That's the number one argument. The other argument is, is that you're spending money to repair and to fix things that you know that sooner or later you're going to have to replace. And so that tipping point, there's three or four tipping points in any budget process. For example, the use of reserves, all of these things that we'll talk about really come down to tipping points. What is our appetite for and where do you wanna make that line? So I will just, before we go to the next slide, wanna just add one thing on capital. We have Jason here from the Board of Ed. You know, we worked, my team worked very collaboratively with the Board of Ed's side, with our superintendent Matt Curris and others to really limit the CIP that was brought to you two weeks ago. And so right at the outset, I wanna thank everybody who was involved in this for figuring out what could wait another year, what could wait another two years to that tipping point that I was just talking about. And our total bonding request this year is significantly less and under the Board of Finance guidance. In fact, a little more than it, it might needed to have been. We could, we could have pushed the envelope a little bit there and still stayed under the guidance. But I think the administrative view is actually in agreement with the Board of Finance that we need to do more to, to capture and reduce debt service costs as quickly as we can. This year alone, and you'll see it again when we put this slide up, debt service costs rose 1.5 million. I wanna thank the Board of Finance for assigning some reserves to attack that problem. As you know, those reserves come out of prior year savings. But it doesn't change the fact that debt service rose dramatically by that number, as you'll see. So we've checked the first box and we'll talk about a few of these boxes tonight. The first box was, can you move capital projects out? Not only did the municipal side do that, did that, but the Board of Education did that. Our Commissioner Public Works and Town Engineer worked collaboratively with us as well to, to kinda give us some guidance on what could wait and what couldn't. So what you have in front of you is a very limited and scaled-back CIP. Secondly, quickly on CNR, we, we just touched on this again that we talked about two weeks ago. Our funding request to this board is flat to last year. That is the key to CNR. And that is another box that we've checked. It is more than the traditional payback, which we've talked about and we can, I'm sure I'll have some questions on that later, but it's roughly 1.1 million. So the budget, and for those watching at home, three, three components, three big pieces to the budget. CIP, for which we borrow, is sharply lower than even the Board of Finance had suggested that it needed to be. CNR is flat to last year, which means we're not asking for a nickel more than we spent last year. And all of our department heads have cut and moved out projects and purchases from CNR to the out years. And we'll talk about that later. And that brings us to operating, which is really what everybody's here to talk about tonight. Next slide. And you can see here the revenue source. This is also, you know, almost a slide I may not use in the future because it's just all blue. What is blue? It's tax revenue, right? For those of you that wanna hear me say it, what is a better number? Maybe 50 or 60, 65% of a municipality's revenue should be coming from, from property, from the property tax. And certainly that's the case with bigger communities around the country. We are very dependent on the property tax and that is what is in front of you. And that is also what creates a lot of constraints for us. We don't have a lot of sources of revenue. We have state aid, we have grants, and we have the tax revenue. And you're all familiar with that, so I, I won't beat it up. But that is one of the things that I think can be a metric by which this board could gauge our success over the next few years. One of those is the relative tax increase compared to our peers and how we wanna get our effective tax rate more in line with the Farmington Valley towns that surround us. But a second one is anytime you can reduce by even a half a percent your town's reliance on the property tax. And there's a number of ways to do that. Economic development is, is just one piece of it. But non-tax revenue in the form of increased grants is another one. So I just wanted to put that up there. You probably won't see it next year, but that's where we are. That slide is broken down. For those of you who couldn't see the very small pieces, and I, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but the total revenue being brought into the town under this proposal is 129 million. You can see the property taxes representing 87.8% of it. That is a number that somehow, some way, we need to all work together to, to get down. All of these I'm gonna assume familiarity with. We all know that the state pilot is underfunded and that state mandates create challenges for municipalities all over this state. I'm, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that. But with respect to the tax revenue, I will say, as, as somebody mentioned in public comment, I think Ms. Coe, you know, we're facing roughly $600,000 decrease in our tax receipts as projected next year. Next slide. And that, we will deal with in just a minute. I wanted to put up a, a historical look just for a moment. You can see this, if you're following online, the big uptick there where the graph goes up was the reval year. But if you look over at the left, you got some interesting data there. Excluding the reval year, you can see the average grant list growth at about 1.26. But if you look at the last two years, my first budget last year, I had just arrived and just been appointed town manager last January, when we brought the budget to you a, a month or so later, we faced 0.06 grant list growth. And we know the challenges that we all faced and I think successfully navigated for the fiscal year that we're in right now. As I stood here last year on February 26th, I, I don't think I would have predicted either a, a worsening of that, but that's where we are at zero, negative 0.31. That is that $600,000 decrease in tax revenue that we were talking about. So, you know, absent the use of reserves, and we'll talk about that in a minute, just to keep two numbers in your head if we could, negative 600 grand in taxes and a approximately 1.5 million more in debt service, as we talked about a minute ago. Next slide. Apologies for this one being small on the print, but I did wanna get this up here because it is very important. This is actually a, a pretty critical slide that we'll come back to if there's questions on it. I'm gonna try to read it as best I can. At the bottom there in the yellow column, you'll see the negative 583. That's that 600,000 I was just talking about that is to the bad in terms of revenue. But more importantly, for this conversation, if you look to the right, the projected grant list growth in fiscal '26, '27, that's a year out from now beyond this year's budget, is 1.4 million. And I wanna just talk about that for 60 seconds because if, as you'll hear, this budget proposes the strategic use of a small amount of reserves to help mitigate the increases that you've seen. And I think our recommendation to this board, at least in terms of the strategic use of reserves, is gonna be tied to this information that's in front of you right now. If you say, and I'm just gonna do the round math for those watching from home, 600,000 negative, this coming next year is the projection, but 1.4 million to the good the year after that. Roughly, that's about 800,000 or 900,000 to the good over two years, just broad numbers. If you divide that in half and you pick a conservative number, just for argument's sake and for discussion tonight, it's 450,000. it's 450,000 that we're recommending be used from reserves to offset mitigate a potential mill rate increase. And we'll end the conversation with this and take questions on it later. But for now, wanted to draw your attention to how did we arrive at that number? There's a couple of different ways that we got to it. One is that prior, the prior budget for this year, used 250,000 in reserves strategically. And it was based in part at the time on the fact that we had a sharply declining motor vehicle tax rate as a result of the state changes that you all know about. So there is precedent. There've been a couple of other times in town history where reserves have had to be used typically. And I think that's probably the main reason to use reserves is when you face a situation like this, when you have declining tax receipts. Not only do you have declining tax receipts, but you have them at a time when you can actually project a turnaround. And so we know that based on the projections that you've got tonight, that we're looking at that 1.4 million. Certain states take a two-year approach to revenue, Connecticut being one of them, Texas being another. You could take those two numbers together, the negative six and the 1.4, and get a blended rate for two years. And that's kind of what we're thinking as we propose this idea to you about the strategic use of reserves. Next slide. I wanted to put this in because last year we started this, and it's important because this obviously will make it into our printed budget book and into the record. We'll make sure that this is there. What I wanted to do was, when I first became your town manager, I looked back at the four or five budget books. And I could see the decisions that were made by our elected leaders on both boards. But what wasn't clear to me was what was cut or what wasn't included. What I did notice that, and I thought this would be an improvement, is each budget year, let's just take a minute to look together at some of the things that are not being done. Because as a couple of you have said to me individually, a budget is really the key way to know what our priorities are. And the reverse is true. If something repeatedly gets cut or is pushed out to the out years, we're really sending a message that we, that's not our priority. So let's at least capture what these are. On the right are some of the items that we would have put into CNR if we had more funding available. And on the left are some of the projects that with our partners at the school district were moved out for further discussion in the out years, years two through six. Next slide. So I want to spend a few minutes here on operating budget costs. Again, this is a, this is a money slide. Before I get into some of these, and these are just examples, this is not a complete list by any means, but just indicative or sort of illustrative of the work that our department heads have done, scrubbing their individual budgets, which we'll also talk about. But what you've got in front of you tonight, I would sum it up this way. It's a budget proposal that certainly can be tweaked both by this board and by the Board of Finance. There's certainly room to make some additional changes before it's finalized. But what we tried to do on the administrative side is we tried to give you a budget that had a little bit of everything in it to get that gap closed. So we couldn't close the gap. Remember, it's that 1.5 in debt service and the 600 on taxes, roughly 2.1 million, and negative grantless growth. We couldn't solve that problem just by cuts. And I don't think anybody expected us to. And we couldn't solve that problem just by coming to the board and saying, well, you've got 20 million in unassigned fund balance. We want to take a million dollars of it or 2 million dollars of it. That wasn't going to work on. And so really what you're looking at is a budget that takes some operating cuts, recommends a relatively small and strategic amount of fund balance, but also approaches grant, the work that we need to do to try to get more grants, which we'll also talk about in just a minute, and a couple of other strategies all rolled into one. And so what you have is a blended budget. And if you pull from one string and decrease, say, the amount of reserves that you're putting in, you'd have to make more cuts. If you put back in some of the cuts we made, you've got the reverse problem. We did not think that it was fair, other than with our partners at the Board of Ed pushing out capital. When it came to the municipal operating side, we wanted to come to you with a budget that cut. And we worked very hard to do that. The Town Hall Administrative Specialist position that you approved last year, we've cut. And it was a difficult, very difficult, it's why it's number one up there. It affects three divisions. It's unfortunate. But we were not able to fill the position fast enough, and it's still to this day as a vacant position. And my preference is to cut a vacant position before you cut an occupied position. If it weren't for that, I still stand by the fact that we need this. It affects our tax office, our assessment office, and our town clerk. I was told, and I'm going to be very candid with the board, that, you know, once you make a cut on a position that you fought so hard to get, it's unlikely that you'll get it again. That's just what I've been told. And I took the opposite view. I said, you know what? If our electeds gave it to us once, and the money's there and the opportunity's there, the following year or whatever else, I'm going to trust them to make the same decision that they made. So, you know, there were a lot of discussions about this. And then I want to let you know that the position is needed. But to cut $100,000 from other lines would have hit programs or would have put departments below the threshold, you know, even police, you'll see, made some cuts. So when you start cutting public safety, and this is non-personnel, but still within the police department, you better know what you're doing. And so this is an example, not just to this board, but to the Board of Finance, that I stood here a year ago and said, that was the number two thing we needed, and we're cutting. Public Works, our commissioner, our director is here, and I want to thank him. As last year, he came up with 100 grand, and I want to thank you for that publicly. We didn't need all of it, and I'll get to that in a minute when we talk about surpluses. But here we are cutting 60,000. And I can't say much about that, other than the fact that it's a, that also was hard to do. The leadership retreat, $12,000 out of, again, this is employee development, training. We're going to take a slightly different approach in this budget, and we're going, and we have cut things that we don't absolutely need this year. But for the record, I really want to stress in my remarks that if the grantless growth is as projected at 1.4 million, and you've only used essentially a half of the difference, assuming you do that, there should be ample room to, you know, give Public Works back and to allow employee development to recommence. Employee development's important. It's only easy to cut because it doesn't impact lives, it doesn't impact programs, and it's my cut to make. It's for my workforce. And I think it's indicative of the fact, and I thank all our department heads for being here, that when they go through their budgets, they look at what they could do without, they're making personal sacrifices as well. We've also moved the department training. You'll notice in your budget, a lot of it has been moved to HR. I do want, on a positive note, thank you very much for your, one of the major things you did in last year's budget is giving us that HR department, creating the Director of HR position and allowing us to add that full-time position for the HR Generalist. Our sincere appreciation to you and the Board of Finance and to the public that voted for the budget referendum. We're getting so much done for our citizens and for our workforce. I want to thank Eric Gomes, our HR Director. And before I forget, just to give you an idea of how important this is to us and the impact it's having, we wanted to ask you for a second intern in this budget. Our UConn MPA Intern Program, which has been so successful here, predates me. Got a couple people here who were graduates of it, and I think my, everybody knows my number three, Franklin, was also a graduate of that program. And in fact, our first selection will be graduating in May.
I could be an intern.
And we'll bring her in, and I am going to pause for questions. But I just wanted to say that, just by way of example, we really felt that we could use another UConn intern in HR because we're making so much progress. And that's 18,000. We didn't want to put in the budget, so it's not here as a cut. But what we did was we moved the intern from the town manager's office to HR just for the year. It'll move back, or we'll get a second one if the grantless growth approves it. We strongly support the intern program. We think that that's a, it's been a big help to the town. And it's only 18,000, and we like to support our friends at UConn. So if this budget passes, HR really needs the intern more than I do. My work with Chappack will be ending. I will be more familiar with the organization. We're getting more efficiencies. My office will be fine without it, although Franklin isn't here to confirm that, interestingly. And we thank him for everything he's doing as well. But I wanted to mention it because it's not on the board, because it's not a cut. It's something we really wanted to ask for. And so how do you share it in a 20-minute presentation that it's not just what you cut? It's the stuff you really needed that you did to ask for, that I hope sends the message that we really did work hard on this. The individual town department conferences are down 10 grand. Culture parks and rec, Tom Dubersky's here, and he's going to have an opportunity to defend any of the things that stayed in there. But I want to thank you, Tom, for this cut. You know, it doesn't look like a lot, 14,000. But when budgets in departments are, you know, on a razor's edge, it is a lot. And the one below it also is a symbol of the depths we went to to try to find some cuts to get this budget to you in a way that you could support. The police department, the police chief is here with the deputy chief. Want to thank you both. These I want to emphasize for the benefit of the public, and the chief can speak to this. Non-personnel, not an impact directly on public safety, but still an impact on the department and the ease with which we're doing our work. We did not total these because if we did, it wouldn't represent the cuts. These again are just illustrative of the things that we did throughout the organization. And my thanks to everybody here. Next slide. I'm going to pick up the pace because I've only got a few minutes. I do want to touch base on this because there's been some discussion. We inked with the board's approval a three-year memorandum of understanding with SVAA that funds a second response unit, as you all know. Thank you for your support and participating in that. They were here before you, last, at the last meeting, doing their first more transparent, open presentation about some of the things that they've done. I know that Slakman Getz is actively involved in that and on the Public Safety Commission and is well aware of the things that are going on there. But our memorandum of understanding calls for us to pay them, support them to the tune of 180,000 in this upcoming budget. That's a lot of money. When, I think when the MOU was inked, we did not yet have these grantless numbers in front of us. And it's a significant amount in our budget. Our proposal is pending the advice of others, more skilled than I. We're asking if we can use our opioid settlement funds to offset that. And the way that would work is the opioid settlement fund currently has about 188,000 in it. We have not done very much in terms of deploying that money to date, which is why I can stand here and recommend that we do this at this point in the absence of anything else that the town board would like to do with it. This is our proposal. It would, there's more than enough money there to offset 180,000 that were obligated to SVAA. From two quick points on this, the way we crafted the MOU, because it's a multi-year agreement, is it is subject to funding. So if the board decided not to fund it, or if the Board of Finance decided not to fund it, because BOF has line item authority over your budget, unlike the school board's budget, a decision could be made to unfund it, not saying it would be. But the one way to offset the general fund expense would be to use opioid settlements. The argument is, is that adding a second response unit is to the benefit of the addicted, those facing addiction crises and mental health crises. And really, the town has, for the most part, doubled our ability to respond, not just to those types of emergencies, but to all types of emergencies. So what's interesting about this proposal is that we believe it meets with the spirit and the law of the settlement agreements. We're waiting for an Attorney General opinion on that question. But we also believe that if you approve this, the money would inure to the benefit of everyone else in the community as well. And is that against the settlement agreement? We don't think so. I will say that for all of the families, like mine, that have had addiction crises and issues within those family bounds, we know that the impacts of the opioid crisis go well beyond the addict, to extend to their families, to taxpayers in general, who through uninsured reimbursement and lack of healthcare, we're all paying, and we all pay, the cost of that terrible crisis. So, excuse me, the argument that we've made to the Attorney General through our town attorney is that this is a proper use of the opioid settlements. I want to just end on one thing with respect to this. Because we don't have the opinion yet, we haven't baked the numbers into the budget that's before you. So we didn't do that. We're just recommending that you support, and hopefully the Attorney General and Town Attorney will give us good advice on that. And that would backfill cash reserves. And it would mean that either you could potentially use more reserves to lower, mitigate mill rate increases, or if the decision was made that 450 is the accurate number, we just found 180 of it. Was one valid question that somebody asked me that is a very fair point, and that is that year three of the MOU with SVAA calls for $160,000 commitment. And if we do this, are we not creating a cliff for year three? Was a very good question. And you'll hear me talk in the wrap-up about cliffs in general. The answer to that is none. What created the cliff was the MOU in the first place, not the decision to use the 180 to mitigate year two. We created this burden for either reserves or operating. When you passed unanimously that, so it's not our decision, you know, our decision or recommendation, rather, to use that 180 is not in and of itself what's creating the cliff. But it would solve the problem in year two, and we think year three is quite a bit, looks quite a bit better. Next slide. Economic development, and I know I'm over time, but I want to get quickly through this. We did nothing more than we did last year. It's 85,000 to support Main Street pursuant to the contractual MOU that this board approved. No new money. We do have a little money in there for other things, including the chamber potentially. And the total in the budget, I think, is 100. Is 100. That's the same 100 from last year. So we are flat funding economic development, even though it's the top priority of this board and certainly on our side, on the administrative side. We see economic development as a number one priority as well. But we're not throwing more money at it in a down year. Next slide. Only two more to go, but I wanted to get these on there for you to look at later. This is kind of a money slide for me. It shows what the last three years of general fund surpluses have been. I want to be clear that the town of Simsbury is fiscally in a good condition. We are a triple A rated, bond rated community. We have money, as you see there, in our fund balance. We are an extraordinarily well-run, well-managed town. And the decisions that the town has made, town leaders have made, have put us in that position. And I think we can all just take a minute to really appreciate the position that we're in. And it's against that slide that my budget recommends using 450,000 from reserves. That's the slide that I want you to look at when you make a decision whether to supplement this budget with reserves or not to do it. 2.9 million, 2.3 million. Last year, the year just closed, 5.9 million surplus. And that's great. That's money, as the Board of Finance Chair recently said, that's being returned to our taxpayers in various ways. And nobody's arguing with that. I think the decision for our leaders is how to do it strategically, so that you don't create a cliff and so that you take a little pressure off the mill rate, but you don't just open the purse strings and say, hey, you know, you can't come to us and ask for that unless you're making tough cuts yourself. And that's what I think we did. The fund balance, unassigned fund balance right now, 20.6 million. Do we have a slide on the graphs? Next slide. Okay. So this is one of my favorites because it's, I actually understand it. The top, the top line, the gray line and the lower line, this yellow line, yeah. In between there is the range, and that's the fund balance policy range. That's what, that's what we're supposed to be in that range. And the blue line is where we are, year over. And you could see, you know, a couple of years ago, that blue line actually hit the gray line. We were actually maxed out relative to our own policy about how much reserves should you have as a percentage of your full budget. That's how they calculate that, right? So, but even today, you could see it, we're in the upper, you know, middle upper part of that range. And I like this slide because it shows you where we are relative to what the policy is. The policy is best practice. We don't argue with the policy. We simply suggest that 450,000 from fund balance is a reasonable request. And I don't want to steal anybody's thunder when you ask our finance director this question. But what is the impact of 450,000? And I'm not, I don't have this number exactly in my head, but I'll bet you it's about a half a mil. Just to give you an idea before we get to the Q and A, that how much you'd have to use in reserves to keep it flat is obviously not an ask that we could make, nor is it an ask that I think the public could expect. So again, this graph kind of puts it in perspective that we are well within the target range of our policy and that the strategic use of reserves in no way would range of our policy and that the strategic use of reserves in no way would impact or potentially impact our bond rating. Next slide. I want to close with just this, and we'll leave this screen, this up on the screen for the benefit of the public as we take some Q and A. You know, we're headed towards your, this board, the Board of Selectmen, presenting to the Board of Finance, the next date I want to draw to your attention is March eleventh. Obviously, the board has a meeting on February twenty-fourth, two weeks hence, at which, again, we'll have all our department heads on hand. There's a workshop piece of that meeting. I believe the chair, Wendy Yvath, authorized the starting at five.
Yeah, five.
Five P M. So for the benefit of the public, that meeting will be starting at five instead of six on the twenty-fourth. We'll have department heads here to answer questions. And then finally, I want to just remind all the board members that any questions that you have between now and then, if you would please email them to Budget Director to my left, Melissa Appleby. We will, what we're doing is we're putting all of the questions into a spreadsheet and then every week or so, we're distributing that so that if one of the board members asks a question, all of the board members are being given the answer to that same question and everybody's getting that information all at the same time. So that's the process. So if you ask us a question, you can be assured that everybody's gonna get that answer. With that, a quick thanks to everybody who's listened to me for now twenty-five minutes and I'd like to end there and answer any questions I can. Thank you, Chair.
So I'm gonna open it up to questions. I think the best thing right now would be to ask some questions as to what was presented in your slides versus what we have
Sure.
kind of in ClearGov and what the budget looks like.
Yeah.
And then go from there. Does that sound reasonable?
Totally up to you, Chair. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have questions I'd like to offer people on the board, questions. Well, do you want me to go first? I'll go first.
You're good to go first.
How's that? So the question I have is, we're, the mill rate stabilization, right? I know last year we did the two fifty because of the motor vehicles. We still have the motor vehicle issue this year. How much, what's the amount that we're not, we expected that we're not getting this year?
Net of the, you've got a small increase to personal property and real estate tax revenue, so that's a positive number, albeit small. And I think the net is five eighty-three to the bad, and that's all because of motor vehicle. But your question is specifically to motor vehicle, we're negative eight hundred some odd thousand.
Coming in this year, so.
Eight hundred and, what is it, thirteen?
Sixteen, sixteen.
Eight hundred and sixteen negative on motor vehicle.
Okay. So we don't know if, or when we'll get that, will make, will be made whole for that going forward either, correct?
I'm assuming that we will not be, that this is not a situation.
So we'll face that probably every year.
I believe so, and our projections for next year show a flat, flat motor vehicle increase. We're not projecting any increase. So that one point four is coming entirely from, almost entirely from real estate.
So the question I have to, you know, to go back to the mill rate stabilization, is you're, we're saying that we're gonna replenish our funds next year. Well, we have, A, we have enough in the bucket to do that without harming any movement. I'm not using technical terms, I'm looking at Amy, but you know, the twenty million dollars, I guess we have, we're using a little bit of that, but we're also saying we're gonna replenish it, well, with the surplus and potential grand list growth, right? Is that grand list growth pretty much baked in for next year? And do we see that grand list growth happening in the following year? So we can kind of start counting on the growth so that we have a way to replenish?
I don't see it in the third year. So again, that one point four is in year two.
Okay.
So next year, we're down, the year after that, we're up. I think you're, the window's too far to project, to project that, but we are confident of the one point four. And the team has looked at that, you know, three, from three different angles, because eight hundred plus of it is negative, on this year, the eight hundred M V going down is roughly twice the four fifty.
Yeah.
Right? So again, as we struggled with how much to ask for
Yeah.
reserves to be used, we wanted to be very cognizant and almost err on the side of a lower number because the impact is probably just under a half a mil. That's important to our taxpayers. That would be, you know, a good thing to avoid. If you use more reserves, you could do more.
So the question, another question, I don't know where it is, so that's, we're gonna have to learn. It said, some, you showed that there's a twenty million dollar bucket of unassigned funds, correct?
And that is not, and just for the benefit of the board, again, that's not the cash reserve fund. That's
Okay.
that is the unassigned fund balance that is projected and required to be within that range that we talked about. The use of cash reserves is separate from that and typically cash reserves, year-end savings, funds, year-end savings requests, or and/or it funds C N R for the following year. So, and I could defer to Amy on anything that I misstate, but I think that's the answer to your question.
So it would be good to see, and again, maybe it's here, it's where, what we have and what we're pulling out this year, so that we use alike reserves, the total amount in capital reserves, how much are we currently, is Mark saying we're using for the town manager's budget, right?
So
Yeah.
His proposal is to use the general fund reserves, which are different than the capital reserves.
For the four fifty. Okay.
But not for debt service mitigation.
The debts are, I guess what I'm saying is, it would be good, and maybe the capital reserves fund, do we, is there somewhere that shows us the total and then how much we're taking out for C, I'm jumping from fund to fund. How much we're taking out right now for C N R, what's left? I know that there's a promise to use it for debt service, but it would be good to see where that balance is at some point, because then we know we'll have it next year too, right? So if we do do this mitigation, we know we can cover that. So those kind of figures would be helpful.
We'll have that to you in advance of the next meeting, just to Amy's point, if I could, and not to put too
Does that make, that makes
It does. The four fifty coming from unassigned fund balance, different from coming from cash reserves, right? What's interesting about that is, is that the cash reserves largely funded by that five point nine million dollar surplus. You want to reduce that surplus because obviously the mill rate in the budget previous is what generated that surplus. So you don't want to take the, you don't want to use reserves from that if at the same time you're working to cut particularly the expense side of the budget so that you don't have that surplus, right? So should we pass a budget this year that would lead to a six million dollar surplus? The answer is no, in our opinion. Our recommendation is to not do that, and we think we've done that, we think we're trending in that direction by cutting the expense side of the budget. So that, you know, that revenue, that increase, that surplus of five point nine, part of it came from revenues underestimated and part of it came from expenses overestimated. And we need to do a better job to, on both sides of the equation, frankly.
Oh, just one more thing back to the, so the general fund balance, right? Not that I would use more than four fifty, but is there a range in there if that would be safe to use, you know, going forward, that we could kind of just see that at some point?
So that kind of goes in accordance with the graph that they had provided on, yeah, there. So that's in accordance with the Board of Finance policy, so I think it's fifteen to seventeen percent is where they set their comfort. We typically transfer into capital reserves around, leave about sixteen percent in the fund. So it's really where the Board of Finance wants to, how low they want to take it, but their policy is we cannot go lower than the fifteen percent.
So how much room is there over the fifteen, the sixteen percent in that balance, I guess? And we can do this next, in two weeks, when we really are
It's a function of the budget, which we know is a hundred and twenty-nine million.
But it's just curious.
I can't do that in my head, but I know the team could.
Um, so we're expecting another surplus at the end of this year. We'll be at around seventeen percent of fund balance if that comes to fruition. And then, I don't know, off the top of my head, sixteen, seventeen, maybe a couple million.
Okay. So just
What is the surplus you're expecting out of this budget proposal?
Um, hold on, I have it. Just don't have it on the top of my head. So in the general fund, we are anticipating a surplus of about two point three million.
Can you go back to the previous slide to show where?
Yeah, fiscal year twenty-five.
The, okay. So two point, about, about where we were in fiscal year twenty-three? Similar?
Yes, for the end of fiscal year twenty-five, which will go into fund balance for twenty-six. Yep.
So a little bit more back in line.
A little bit.
All right, did you get your, your head?
Well, so
Wait, hold, hold.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
And so you're suggesting we use four fifty, four hundred from the general fund balance?
From the unassigned fund balance.
From the unassigned balance. And then we would look at capital reserves potentially to offset other things, including debt service, without going over, like we have a range within there as
Yeah, and I think, I think that's a great question. I think most of those issues are not controversial in the budget cycle, and I think from our tri-board guidance and some other comments and working with the Board of Ed, I think that the use of cash reserves is, there's some wiggle room, which was to Wendy's question of can you give us that? And we will work that out exactly where it's going in the various directions. But I think that that's really, it's used. Taking the four fifty from unassigned fund balance seems to be appropriate because of your, where you are relative to the guidance. But more importantly, to Heather's question, if you are in fact projecting still a two point three million dollar surplus in the current fiscal year, you certainly could move that back to, to, to cover the unaside, and put aside the one point four million dollar growth. So, am I saying that we would ask for it if there wasn't gonna be grand list growth? Probably not, because I'm as conservative as you are when it comes to this, and I know our Board of Finance is as well. But, but when you add all of that together, the one point four million to the good in grand list growth, the projected surplus that you're hearing now of two point three, right? Which is also a conservative number, I would say. I think, I think that it would give me pause, it wouldn't give me any pause to pull four fifty to help mitigate.
I'm just, I'm, I'm always concerned with the fact that we end up with these surpluses. It just seems like we're overtaxing our residents. I mean, five point nine is crazy, but even two point three, two point nine, it just seems like, and you're saying we're being conservative, that we're overtaxing our residents. It's concerning.
So just a couple of comments on that. I tend to agree with you personally, as I think you know. I think the issue is that because Simsbury has funded the cash for capital from C N R, and because I agree that that is a very prudent and, I wouldn't say it's best practice because it's still rare around the country, but I understand the need to reduce debt service costs and the way you do that is by using cash and creating this middle-of-the-road C N R category, even though many municipalities do not do that. So I hesitate to respond fully to the question because if you're doing that model, then you do need a surplus in order to fund it, right? And, and you know, the only alternative that, and I have thought about this long and hard, is you create a budget that budgets for it. This is what I was able to do in Poughkeepsie, budgeted a specific number. And that, rather than budgeting and letting it fall to the bottom line as a surplus and not knowing what it is, you could budget for a direct contribution to C N R, and that's what it is. And so there are other ways to do this. And I think we're, respectfully, the town is at an inflection point about this question. It's at the, at the heart of how you want to budget moving forward, because you've got operating, you've got C I P, and you've got C N R. And if for the next five, six, seven years, we're operating under the new Board of Finance guidance that you can only bond ten million every two years, which is much less than we need as a community, and I think everybody agrees that, agrees with that. And if you also limit C N R, unless you have a surplus, then Heather, the only option is to budget for the surplus and let it fall. But your question is
It seems like that's more transparent.
In my view, respectfully, it would be more transparent to budget a number. I did it in Poughkeepsie, I actually got written up for doing it, quick story. We had a thirteen million dollar fund balance deficit, and I budgeted five hundred thousand in operating to go to fund balance. And you know what the New York State Comptroller said? Not enough, at that rate, you'll never get your deficit under control. They didn't say, hey, kudos, you were the first town and municipality in the state of New York to budget for that specifically, right, to eliminate a deficit. We were the first to do it. We got written up because it wasn't enough, and we ended up having to rely on the surpluses. And those surpluses came from vacancy factor, which we haven't talked about yet. You'll hear more about that on the twenty-fourth. But the way Poughkeepsie was able to pay off that fund balance deficit was by budgeting for positions that would never be filled and the bottom fell to the, the surplus fell to the bottom line. But to your point, the taxpayers were paying for that, and it wasn't budgeted as deficit reduction. It was budgeted, it was budgeted as eight cops that were never filled. How can that be the transparent way to go? But again, I can only give you options.
So when you budget for, when you budget for a surplus and it tends to be around, I mean, I think twenty-four was an odd year or so, the two point three or two point five million, why that number? Why is that a number?
It's interesting, again, you're, you're getting me with the good ones. And I'm really, I gotta, I gotta thank you for the, for the question. And Diana, you see it too. You're returning to the baseline is what you're doing, right? You, you had, you had the anomaly, six million, and the year just passed, and we're projecting two point three before we even put that slide up. What jumps out at me, having done this for twenty years, is that we're projecting to be back in the ballpark of where we were before the anomaly. The question then is what's causing that consistent surplus? And, and I could tell you this, that in the budget that's before you now, it is not gonna be an overestimation of expenses and we come in under every year because I cut the expenses.
So, going back to the five nine then, you know, we have this surplus, and I think people at home are seeing this, and we need to answer to them what, like, they have now been overtaxed for that, and we now have a surplus between expenses that came in under budget, or revenues that may have come in a little over. They, they don't care, like, they've been now taxed. And we need to answer what we're doing with that. And even if it's the overage from the two point three to get to that five point nine, I, I think, to Wendy's point before, like, we need to see, like, where, to show to them, what are we doing with that? And where is it being?
We are using it, and it goes to reserves for C N R, so we are gonna be using it. And I know that there's a plan to use it for debt service relief
Right.
which will lower everybody's, the operating. So there, it is gonna be put to use.
I do want to just jump in if I can, Chair, and emphasize this point, because the devil's in the details. We did not put up a slide on the savings to our taxpayers by the use of reserves to pay cash for capital. So there is another, there's another side. And in fairness to that argument, which, and I, again, that's why I said at the top, it's a tipping point. I, I, there's more than one way to do it. It's, nobody's got the answer that this is the right way. What we need is to have the type of discussion that we're having. Last year, it was around, you know, vac, filling positions and critical needs here. This year, the main theme of the budget is kind of what we're getting at a high level this, this year, and that's brilliant. The need to get into our capital planning over the summer off budget, which I mentioned in my budget message, and I wanted to end with that while we've got all the department heads here. You can't, realistically, things have to change. We're a small town, but we're facing big community problems. And the issue is, for me, as your town manager and for our department heads, is how can we come up with a six-year capital plan in the middle of the operating budget over the course of just sixty days and get it all to, we can't. What we need to do is, with your help and our colleagues at the Board of Ed and all of us, really, over the summer months, our proposal is that we work collaboratively to, to, to look at the out years for C I P. And those drivers are, and that's why, you know, the plan in front of you for the C I P out years is not a complete plan because we can't identify, and individually, I certainly can't, as your town manager, I'm recommending these things over those things. It's gotten out of control to the point where we, we need to get together as a group, all three boards and the administration, to spend some time, a couple of months over the summer on C I P.
So to that point, that's something to table for
Yeah.
um, next week, because we are gonna have to come up with the, some sort of bonding amount for the next twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so that when we push it to the Board of Finance, it's not gonna get pushed back if we're not following that guidance, right? And, and last year, we had to do that with that unfunded category and take some priority. So, so some, somewhere between now and then so some, somewhere between now and then, we have to come up with some sort of prioritization of the C I P projects.
So I can chat with, um, Lisa offhand, but we had had our agenda prep meeting, kinda mentioned, we talked about through some of that.
Yeah.
Um, but before, when we were originally doing the budget last year, that was before the proposal of the ten million every two years.
Yeah.
So if they've already set that guidance, and then we, you're not really forced to pick those projects in the out-years now.
Okay.
So she didn't really seem overly, um, concerned about the out-years, knowing that there's that guidance in place, but I can certainly.
Yeah, just cause we don't wanna do it and then have it come back to us after to pick it.
Yeah, I can double track.
Going in, that it's okay to wait till next year makes our lives easier, I guess. Although there's an unknown as to what, what projects are gonna be done for everybody else next year, right? It's good to kind of have an idea that your project maybe be starting. Yeah, yeah. Um, so that, well, I think we'll talk more about that next week. That's why, this is kind of, um, it's kind of a weird, I, I can't remember the old present, town manager presentations, cause I think we just kinda did the presentation, asked some high-level questions, and then the workshop was where we got into details on everything. But, um, I, I wanna, you know, and I know that everybody's here, so you're gonna be here again. Um, so if there's questions we wanna ask tonight of staff, I think we should do that while you guys are here.
Sure. And this is just more general, um, you know, with all the changes in Washington. Have you done, like, an impact to see what, what, what risks that we have as far as potential grants, or, you know, we're going with the budget and trying to understand, um, you know, certain, certain monies we're counting on, we may not, may not receive. Is there any impact assessment as far as our risk?
There's an ongoing, uh, awareness and, and monitoring of, of what's going on. We, we rely on CROG and our partners, you know, at the, throughout, uh, state government for, for important notices and, and alerts. We recently, uh, with finance, went through, uh, kind of a top-down look at, well, what, what could be the immediate impacts, and came up with a no immediate impact, risk is okay, um, potential impact over the Housing Authority as a HUD.
Transportation, wasn't there?
Transportation, you know, a lot of, a lot of the, some federal money flows to us through the state. We're not hearing from our state partners that those monies are at risk, um, but it's certainly something you wanna keep an eye on. I, I, I won't editorialize, other than to say that it's obviously a concern around budgeting, uh, when, when another branch of government, uh, holds the purse strings and, and could decide to change what it's doing. So we're, we're, we're watching. But right now, the answer is no.
There, there could be a lot of impacts on that CROG, because they get a lot of, they kind of filter through the, the infrastructure.
Yeah.
Money comes through them, and then they disperse it to the town, so that could be where there's, if, if that money, if they're ever, if they're allowed to hold it all up, that will impact their, um, how, how about, uh, there's Kevin.
So, uh, I think that the work done on ClearGov is, is quite worth it. So I appreciate that, and having the dynamic views there is, is really powerful. And I know that there are still some that are gonna prefer to use it offline, so I appreciate you mentioning that. There's, uh, uh, work to get a PDF view. Um, and, uh, your chart that was on, uh, slide seven, that was the split of the revenue sources.
Yeah.
Um, I think it could be informative, even though you broke it out on slide ten with, uh, motor vehicle, uh, grantless, uh, real estate, and, uh, and personal property. I think it'd be, uh, helpful for others to decide to keep a, a chart like that in, in the future.
Blue one?
Yeah, just to break up, uh, those sources, cause I think that can be informative, and I think that it's, um, you know, a challenge for us and limiting, uh, knowing that motor vehicle property taxes is capped, and it, that restricts our ability to, um, broad-based, uh, level support from all the people who live here versus just, uh, uh, residential property owners, um, you know, bearing a significant proportion of the, of the, versus all of the available potential revenue from, uh, from those. In the, um, um, the Public Works Budget, you had mentioned, or in the, the cuts, that was on, uh, slide twelve, where you talk about the sixty thousand that was cut, uh, from, from poor Tom again. Um, I wasn't clear if that was additive to the prior year cut, or this is, um, him having fully funded last year's budget, and then only taken up the, the sixty. Could you clarify that?
You got me there. No, I'm just kidding. Tom?
Uh, a partial, but we, we put back fifty of the hundred thousand that was cut, and then cut sixty.
Sixty, serious?
I, I knew I was gonna take that. We give him back fifty of the hundred, and then we took sixty, but I appreciate.
But it feels good to get the fifty back.
Look at that. Well, we're all, we're all for you.
We took a two-year approach.
The, the S V A A, uh, you know, fully support the idea of getting that second, uh, daytime ambulance. Uh, we need to do it. The source of funding, um, you mentioned the using the opioid funds, which makes sense to me. Um, but, uh, the approved use and, and all that is just something that makes me really uncomfortable, as we're going into the cycle now, and we've gotta have something in place on July one. What do you think as far as timeline for the approval, and are there other programs or activities that we currently have in operating that could be funded appropriately, using the hundred and eighty thousand from the opioid funds, and then we just backfill it? Another way, uh, if that, uh, uh, you know, knowing that we can guaranteed use it there.
If, if I can, uh, selectman Beal, can I, 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 rather than give you a half an answer now, let me get back to you on the twenty fourth with that. Uh, the town attorney has spoken with the A G, but I haven't had a chance to follow up with the town attorney.
Okay, that's fine. Are there other activities in town that we could use the opioid funding for?
Possibly in the Social Services budget, but, but, uh, I, I don't wanna get our hopes up. Let me, let me circle back with staff, and I'll get back to you.
All right, that's, that's, uh, all from me now, until the other times, I'm sure.
I, I just had a quick, I, I guess you guys are all sitting here, but the, um, bank fees, what, what's the, what was the reason for the large increase in bank fees? I noticed in finance, in a.
Oh, yeah, so we have bank fees in a bunch of the departments, and we just re- reallocated all of them to the finance department, just to make tracking easier.
And you answered my question about the training line items, which were new, right?
Rolled up and cut, so there were cuts there, but also rolled up to H R, so we have a little bit more, uh, flexibility in terms of timing things and, and who's doing what, so.
I did have one other thing, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, and I'll do my best if I talk with, you know, people out on the street or wherever. I do, and even in our own discussion, I don't think there's a misunderstanding among this group, but I think it could easily be among the public, and the difference between, um, the surplus at the end of year versus the necessary requirement of having an unassigned fund balance and an appropriate budgeting. Um, so I don't know if there's a better, you know, explainer, or just a way to make sure that the public understands, the unassigned fund balance is not overtaxing, for sure. Um, there are questions about the end of year surplus and, and what that, you know, surplus should, should, should be, but I, I, I wouldn't want the public to be, um, to misunderstand.
Yeah, it's a good point, and I, I don't, I don't, I will end with that, because it's a, just to circle back. I'm, I'm, I'm really pleased that, that, that the budget conversation is on the higher complex issues, as opposed to, you know, a line-to-line, you know, we need to cut five hundred dollars here, a thousand there, because these are very important issues, uh, for the board to wrestle with. I, I, I stopped just short of saying overtaxation, because it, it, the, the, the taxpayer is benefiting from that money. There's no question about that. Whether it's the use of reserves, to fund capital, or, or anything else. So, you know, you, you will, uh, get pushback when, when you, when you use that term. All I'm saying is, is that, all things being equal, we think that the request to this board to pull four fifty under, under the circumstances detailed here is a reasonable request, and, and we're happy to engage in the broader conversations um, outside of the budget process. And, and I do believe, and I, I can't speak for our colleagues on the Board of Finance, but I think they're equally willing to have these conversations at any time as well. They've always signaled in the chair, certainly, a willingness to, to, uh, engage in these conversations at any time throughout the year. I think my personal preference is, is that we do it off-budget cycle, so that we have clarity. Um, and as I said at the top, but again, thank you to the Board of Finance for giving us the clarity on C I P, because that, we hit, we hit that, hit a home run, did what we needed to do. And, and, and it doesn't reduce debt service costs next year, but it will hold them down in the out-years. And that is so important, because if you manage your operating budget to reduce the surplus every year, we wanna bring that surplus down, you're gonna have less for C N R, not more, and you're gonna have to be able to be, to bond and be under that line. You know, so all of this is, is a, it, it's a wheel in, in motion. There's a reason why we ask for additional C N R guidance. Uh, we don't care if you double the traditional payback, or you just say we're gonna give you one point one minute, whatever you do, as long as it's a sum certain. And the response currently, I think, is, eh, eh, you know, and I'm translating a little bit, but it's, well, we have to wait till we see what the cash reserves are, which means we have to wait to see what the surplus is. But by the time we see the surplus, we've already had to submit our budget for the next year. We're estimating the service, the, the surplus for this year now at two point three. I'm giving you a budget for next year without the benefit of knowing how much we're gonna be able to spend for C N R, and that, that, that ties to how much are we gonna spend for C I P. So, again, I say the third time, it's not that paying cash for capital is bad. It isn't. It's not knowing how much you can pay for ca- for cash for capital, and this question that we asked before, isn't it better to budget for it? Than just to throw a dart at the wall and say, well, whatever the surplus is, that's what you got. Thank you, Chair.
Do you wanna talk to just, uh, 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 are you guys bored, or do you want questions? We can, we're probably gonna ask the questions next week, and we can send them in advance.
I put them all to sleep. That's, uh, riveting.
We, we could send the questions to consolidate them, to have the answers next week, instead of.
We could all take some questions now, couldn't we?
Well, I have one question for you. Well, you, I think you addressed it in your letter, but I thought, I thought it'd be good if you addressed it in public, is the increase in fees that you're recommending, um, for building to, to gain a little more, but that will require us to en- enact a policy.
And thank you for that, because we put up a slide of cuts, but we didn't put up a slide of increased revenue. I wanna thank George, uh, in planning. I think the, um, the answer here is the building permit increase proposal, which is, uh, George, help me out here, a buck or something. We're, we're recommending a, a small amount. We'll have that to you on the twenty fourth.
Okay.
To increase building permit fees, and it increases revenue by?
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand.
Is that a dollar? That's a dollar increase.
It, it's a one-dollar increase.
I think you, you don't wanna make it any higher.
Well.
Well, the memo I sent, uh, uh, allowed, you know, two dollars would be about a hundred thousand dollars, if you have Tom his money back.
There you go.
We were, we were guided by, uh, not to argue against self-interest here, we do want the dollar increase. The last time the town increased it on our side was back in twenty twelve or something, but there was an increase for the benefit of the fire district that impacts people as well, and, and while that's not in my budget, it, it was, uh, it guided my recommendation to ask for one instead of two, and that based on a decision of a prior board here approving what the fire district did in twenty twenty one, two, twenty twenty two, so.
So just so I understand, that means that, uh, the general average person is gonna pay one dollar more for their project, or is it additive across, like, an entire project? Yeah, so, so the current building fee is, uh, it's fourteen dollars and twenty-six cents per one thousand dollars of construction cost. So with that, with one dollar, it would go fifteen dollars and twenty-six cents per one thousand dollars of construction cost. Thank you.
Uh, I would just say, Chair, that was the only revenue item that, that my side changed. I think the, the Board of Finance and finance may have changed some other things, but the, um, in terms of non-tax revenue, that was the only one, and we do, you're right to point out, we do need to bring that to you as a separate piece of legislation, uh, and we'll introduce it, uh, with your permission on the twenty fourth.
Will we get a, a breakdown of what their cuts were, so that, like, so for, like, example, you look at, the police department has sixty thousand dollars in cuts. Now, you're making it very clear, we want the public to know it's not personnel, and it's, and we're not, we're, you know, it is, it is not going to impact public safety, but it does impact departmentally. Um, you know, so, so where are those cuts coming from, and what were you cutting that you would've liked in the budget? Um, that, you know, i- is it something that you're gonna push out to another year, hopefully, or, um, is it, uh, you know, more of a want? So, uh, you know, I would, I, I think it would be good to know what the cuts are, so if they wind up coming in another year's budget.
I don't know, Diana, what the, what the exact numbers, but part of it is the, uh, is an early retirement that would be backfilled with somebody of a lower grade. So there were some savings there, and I believe it's uniform. I don't wanna speak for you, Chief, was it uni- uniform, uh, lens?
I don't know if the uniform was that, was that round, or that was before that, but, yeah, that was, that was, uh.
You had two rounds, I think.
Yeah, a couple of different rounds of cuts, but, um, there were cuts that were even before these cuts.
Okay. Because it's good to know that anything, even though they may seem small, but are, you know, is it, is it one of the things that we, you know, by next year, then we're gonna see it back in the budget somehow, because
Yeah.
it got cut, and they, they, they were, we're all trying to trim.
We'll get you that information, absolutely, yeah.
I have a library question.
Sure.
It's just a, uh, it's, it looks like a restructuring. Um, if I look at the, um, salary library admin, um, shows a nineteen percent increase in salary, and then under adult and young adult, young, adult and young, adult and young adult, that's what it's, sorry, it just sounded really weird. It shows a decrease. So did you just move, did something move around there?
Working with Melissa, we've reallocated the business and career center coordinator's salary to the administration rather than adult.
Okay.
So it's just a movement of the salary.
Okay, that's what, o- okay, thank you.
Yeah, and if I could, just, um, just a point of kind of the layout of this new system, I think an important note, um,
Could be great.
With the old-fashioned, you know, Excel sheet that we used to provide off to the side, if there were any major changes like that, there would be like a little note.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, those notes now are, they're still there, they're just showing above, um, the expenditure charts in each department. So like, for that particular question, if you were gonna to navigate to library, um, either library administration or adult and young adult, there's a similar note for both, um, on that page, it'll, it'll indicate the major change in this budget includes um, an increase in the full-time salary line due to reallocation of funding for business center court. So that's just an example where, um, you, the notes are still there, they're just not in the place you're used to seeing them, so.
Yeah, you pointed that out, but I never, I missed this one, so maybe my other questions are, are there too, or answers.
I, I'm sorry, Chair, if I could, I neglected to answer a question from two weeks ago. I think I might've done this by email on the three sixty-five. I see.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Okay, could you get the, you got the memo? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
So I was just gonna, I just wanted to, um, say what I think for next, the next meeting, since we're ma- making it earlier, and we're kinda calling it a workshop, so I'm hoping that we kind of follow, oh, the way we, not, not that we need every department to do a presentation, but I think just kind of do a quick run-through in ClearGov each section at a high level, and if people have questions, we can do that. And I don't think that will take that long, I, just to make sure we cover everything in the budget. I'm, I'm not sure, you know, if the board thinks that that would be helpful or not on how to do that, and maybe let Amy or Melissa drive that process. It's hard to remember how we used to do it, unless you go back and watch the workshops, and I'm not.
I think there's no reason why we shouldn't go through each department at least once.
Okay.
And have a discussion, and then if we have no questions, maybe we don't need the department heads, and if we generate a question, maybe there can be a, a time of me get those questions in.
Yeah, yeah, and, and then the other thing I wanna add too is, um, because we're kind of a little bit of a month early, half a month early, and not that you will be excited about this, but because we don't have the Saturday workshop, um, and you prefer coming at night. So, um, we have the twenty-fourth, and I'm not sure that the question and answers and the, the manipulation of all the data will result in us finalizing the budget on that night. So I do wanna see if we can potentially get a tentative or additional night by the board, which would be a special meeting, um, in case we don't do that, so we have it on the calendar. I don't think we need to schedule it yet, but to maybe do a poll amongst members of the board that we have a, a night that we can meet. Because we meet on the twenty-fourth, we do have a meeting on the tenth, but if we leave it to the tenth, and we have to present to the Board of Finance on the eleventh, that's not gonna be fun for whoever's doing the presentation.
Oh, that's you.
I know, I know. Thank you. So, so just somewhere between the twenty-fourth potentially, um, you know, we could wait till the twenty-fourth and see how it goes, and just putting that out there.
Slide, nearly had that last one.
If you guys think that, cause I, I, I don't know if we're gonna be ready to make decisions as we're gaining information and going through everything, unless we're gonna be here for a really long night and don't wanna sleep on it, I guess, would be my thinking.
I, I guess my, my preference was, is that we, um, should have an obligation to go through, uh, the departmental budget, but I, I don't think that we necessarily need to put every department head through the wringer of sitting through an entire meeting in case we have one. Uh, but if we're able to at least, uh, categorize and, you know, organize our thoughts, and then we can ask specific questions, or schedule another conversation where we're gonna have the dialogue, if we feel like a dialogue is necessary.
Yeah, I think the ne- the twenty-fourth, we should go through pretty much what we have in ClearGov, but if there's any, like, major decisions that we're not ready to address on the twenty-fourth, I don't know if we would need that, the, um, department heads, but we, we would need our finance team to, to help us formulate and see what it looks like, what impact to the mill rate and stuff like that. So that, that's kind of what I was thinking. So you guys probably only have to come one more time, so. So I'm, I, I think I'm fine. I don't know if anybody has any other questions for now. And if you do have questions, why don't we send them to Melissa and then we could compile all the answers together. And one other thing I did ask for, in case anybody was looking at this online, is the outside agency funding. We're going to make that available somewhere so people could see those because they're not buried in, in ClearGov because it's an outside form, not part of the system. So.
Uh, just to ask the team, anything I missed? Anything?
Good.
I think we're good.
Melissa, did you want to say something?
I was just going to say in advance of the 24th, I know you're going to send questions, but just so we can prepare for sort of that format. And obviously it's, it's not your day job, so I appreciate that it's, it'll take a while to go through all the departments. But wherever possible, if, um, to get those questions to us and to sort of formulate, if there are specific departmental questions, just so we're not spending the 24th, just like providing an overview of department, unless that's where the direction you want to go. But what I'm hearing is you'd like to go through each department and just sort of ask pertinent questions or anything that any.
Yeah, I, I picture like click on the town manager's office, any questions there? Yes, no, move on to the next one. Um, you know, the, the, obviously the outside agency funding and the commission stuff, we would probably talk about the boards and commissions, um, election. Some of these will probably be not much to talk about town clerk, things like that. Uh, but I would be happy to send you the questions I have, um, you know, by the ends of this week. Is that re, it, it, I mean, if we can get you specific questions by the end of this week.
That's fine too. We can, you know, do it as they come in and, um.
And organize them by department, then we can just, we maybe we can move fast.
Would it be helpful to, oh, sorry, Steve, um, just to orbit, like to have a schedule of departments? So we know which one goes first.
Well, I was going to say, just go through the order that's in ClearGov. We could go through the dropdowns.
You're at the bottom of the list, you're probably later running from late to meeting.
I think because it's after hours, we're here, they're here. As opposed to, I think that works, right, works for us.
Steve, you got a question?
Yeah, just, uh, I know we've got the food pile with the PDF and printing this out.
Oh, yeah.
But it's fourteen days away is the 24th. If they're going to take seven days to figure out this debacle, um, that's not catastrophic, but it's definitely going to impede me and my ability, you know, I go through line by line and I need it in written format, so.
We'll print it ourselves if we have to.
Okay, I ju, I just want to say that, you know, that is going to impact the ability of all of us that use that format.
Thank you for that.
Okay, I think we can.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Mark and, and team.
Thanks, everybody. Good job. Unless you want to stay for the mid-year transfer. So we gather.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Lately, burly.
You're a board member.
So.
Thanks, Tom.
No, I'm going to do that.
I th, I got it.
And it's, and it's, all right.
Sarah's?
She's fifty pounds now. All right, we're back to, we're back to work, I guess. The next item is selectmen liaisoning committee report, so I'm going to just off the top of my head. Curtis, you got anything?
Uh, yes, uh, at zoning, they voted to streamline the process for, in eighty years.
All right.
Um, they changed workforce housing to housing strategies floating zone, so H S F Z. They made an adjustment to R eight zoning. Police commission, they, um, twenty percent, I guess, they're on extended leave. Uh, new officer started today. The citizens academy starts next month. Marine was, uh, accepted today.
They're in the middle of the budget. They had their budget, uh, workshop this past Saturday. They are, you know, along with us doing two budget mailers. They're planning for that. They are restarting the commu, communicator quarterly newsletter. They are restarting that this spring that hadn't been done, I think, since COVID. And they're, they're having a special education program review by specialized strategic consulting, which is an outside consultant, to look at, uh, making sure that, um, the, the special education programming and funding is, um, appropriate and, um, in line. Youth services advisory board, uh, we met today. They were given a hundred can doses of Narcan by the police and they, uh, social services distributed them to, uh, Parks and Rec, the library, Framington Valley YMCA schools, and they have a few more, uh, available to distribute. On March 12th, there will be a multi-generational dance class. And as we mentioned earlier, the, uh, food pantry have been cutting. They also donated to the reading before kindergarten program at the library to help fund that. And then aging and disability, as you know, I've emailed with the board that I'm working with Tom Fitzgerald and, uh, the members of the aging and disability commission on some grants from AARP as well as a few others to fund some, uh, senior lunches and programming.
Kevin?
From water pollution control, I don't often report out from, but there was a, an email exchange that interfaced with sustainability on, um, use of garbage disposals. If you have one in your sink in your house and putting eggshells and coffee grounds and bones and other garbage like that down the, uh, drain can actually cause some pretty significant problems with the water pollution control. So they don't recommend doing that. I'm sure if something slides down there, they won't be too upset, but it's not, uh, something we're going to start throwing all that trash. And so as we're thinking about composting and other ways of disposing, um, you know, household trash, just don't use your, uh, your garbage disposal there. It can cause an issue not only for the, um, uh, for the sewer plant, uh, but it can also start to clog your, uh, your sewer line in front of your house, which can cause expensive plumbing bills for you, um, yourself. So, um, sustainability committee, thanks to this board for, um, uh, accepting and, and moving forward with the Power Smart campaign launch. On February 25th at six thirty PM in the Simsbury, uh, Public Library, there'll be the campaign, uh, launch for, uh, Power Smart. So, um, look forward to seeing those, uh, interested there. And I think it's going to try to be recorded and more information will be, um, available about that too. I had shared and I know that, um, the first selectman had seen this, you know, cost of electricity, uh, continues to ride. There's a rise, there's a bill in the state legislature, House Bill, uh, five nine six five that concerns the, uh, community choice aggregation. It may be something that I'll bring, um, uh, to this board here for consideration if we want to put a joint letter, uh, uh, support for that. There'll be a public hearing that will be too soon for us to consider tonight, um, and maybe even for our, our next meeting. But I'm sure that if we're in agreement about supporting it, uh, what the, um, the intended purpose would be would allow a community like Simsbury to join in power purchase agreements in the, um, in a way of reducing, uh, the cost of, uh, electricity for, uh, ratepayers here in the community, which, uh, by, uh, joining together, we could find, um, you know, more affordable ways of, of purchasing power. Um, and it also would allow us to prioritize, uh, certain sources of power, for instance, green energy or others, if we decided we wanted to go that rate, that way, or, um, have a, that option available to residents if they wanted to. The law wouldn't necessarily require a community to do it, but it certainly gives us the option. And right now we don't have the option and I kind of like options. So, um, right now I'm in, in support of it as it's, uh, as it's, as it's written, it's, uh, sort of a non-partisan, um, uh, proposal right now. But it is, um, it was, uh, not supported in 2020 and it's now back, uh, on this year's docket. It's in the, um, uh, Energy and Technology Committee. I'll mention one last thing, and that's just on, on voting and in our registrar and the town clerk's budgets as we prepare, uh, for early voting, you know, just in the, even the municipals. So we have to operate the municipals just like we do, um, you know, resident, you know, regular presidential election. And I, um, even though we're all super excited about supporting local government, there just won't nearly be as much turnout, but the cost will be pretty much the same. And then the governor's budget, he's, uh, pretty much halved, uh, the funding, uh, level of support that, uh, the state had already given us, uh, pretty much a pittance before as well. So that will hurt a town like us. We need to be prepared for it and not underfunded. So everybody's right to vote and they should be allowed to vote easily and we should be able to make it accessible to them. But, uh, this burden is being unfortunately borne by residential property owners here in this town, uh, for that, um, you know, increased cost. That's all for me.
Thank you. Okay, um, so we're, now we're going to move right into the mid-year transfer request item. I'll have that maybe up here. So do you want to take that, Mark and, or Amy?
Yeah, I mean, I can kick us off and Amy's here as well as Melissa.
Just, we haven't done these before, so.
So I, the, the main thing to remember is if, if, if the transfer is within the department, it's solely in the purview of the Board of Selectmen. If it's, um, between departments, then it requires your board to approve and the Board of Finance. So you've got before you some, uh, one that is, I think, just, uh, within the library and that's the first one, item four, that you would move effective to move the fifteen thousand. This is for, uh, additional, uh, part-time hours and is coming from savings within the library. The others are moving from, uh, employee benefits to contingency line transfer. Very quickly, I'll just point out that all of those union contracts, if you look at the memorandum, page one, uh, going into page two, total contingency payouts were three sixty-three to forty-six, which is, uh, short just sixteen to eighty-five. You know, this is actually, I think, a, a tribute to, uh, the team in finance and payroll and, and to Tom and everybody that calculates all of this because you're, you're really close. You had all those union agreements and, and, uh, we had the right amount of money in contingency, uh, short that sixteen thousand. And then the, the others that, I won't go through each one of these. Mid-year transfers, I know it's the first time this board has encountered this. They're, they're coming to you pursuant to our charter, which allows us to do this after January, uh, through, through the midpoint of the year, the fiscal year. And again, as the finance director indicated, we're projecting a roughly two point three million dollar surplus. And so we think that, uh, these would be, uh, appropriate. And then lastly, I would say that wherever possible, obviously the, uh, contingency one is contractual, but wherever possible, you would want to use this tactic to take pressure off next year's budget. So keep that in mind. Uh, and I'd open it up for questions for, uh, either Amy or myself.
No questions.
Yep.
Um, I'm just curious where the four hundred and seventy in savings incoming is coming from and what past your savings we've had in that department.
I'll let Amy take that one.
So that is, the four hundred and seventy thousand is mainly related to the employee benefits line item. So that's for our vacant positions. Right now we have a couple of open positions, so we don't, we don't need health benefits for them. And then any positions that have turned over that have gone from family to single, things of that nature. I believe we had similar savings in that line item last year as well. Thank you.
I have a question on the contingency. So basically these are all contracts that were settled over the extra money that we needed to settle the union contracts?
I don't know that that.
Contingency payouts, I just, could you just?
Yeah, I wouldn't say over. I mean, it, it is sixteen thousand more. That could just be a timing issue.
Yeah, because it was, we did the contracts after the budget or, right? So it's just kind of cut.
So, so we put the money in contingency and then come to you for.
Okay, okay, sorry. And then, um, the, the three transfers, other, well, the two transfers, the, the forty for the website rate and the Parks and Rec snow microburst money came to us at year end, year end. We approved, but the Board of Finance didn't. So now we're going to try to use mid-year savings for those.
So you got, you all approved the Parks and Rec, um, microburst cleanup? And then when it went to the Board of Finance, they recommended doing transfers instead of a supplemental, which is why it's back here.
Okay.
And then the forty thousand was part of the, um, year-end transfers that did not pass.
Yep. And then could, can someone explain the parks maintainer, how that, that was a miss or what happened there?
So when we were putting the salaries together for the budget, um, for the fiscal year twenty-five budget process, we had added a parks maintainer to the budget. It was one of those three positions that the Board of Finance kicked back and let you all pick which position.
That was the year, the, yeah, a while ago.
Impacted this one. There was a formula error in the worksheet where that position was added to the bottom. The formula did not carry down and therefore we missed it in the budget.
Okay, okay, so we have room to fix that. And then the library, this was also came, this also came to us, um, for year-end transfers. So we're doing it now, um, with mid-year savings. And then I, I did ask Mark this question. This is a item that is a, it's an ongoing need. It wasn't just a temporary need.
Yes.
And Mark said he is accounting for that in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget if we.
It's in there.
Okay. Uh, that, that's all I had for questions, so turn them over to anybody else. Nobody else? All right. So, uh, ask for a motion effective February tenth, twenty twenty-five to transfer fifteen thousand dollars from library adult services full-time line item to the part-time line item to appropriately staff the information desk and further move effective February tenth, twenty twenty-five to recommend to the Board of Finance transfers between departments as presented below and in accordance with the attached schedule. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Okay. Move on to that. Uh, the next item is the Brownfield grant. Tom, are you going to explain that?
Yep.
Would you like to share that explanation?
Yeah. So as Mark had pointed out, we had had a kind of effort starting, um, in our office to look for more grants. This came across from an email from Crowe of the yearly Brownfield grants that the state does, actually they do it twice a year. And I reached out to George and asked if he thought there was any kind of properties in town that this might be useful. He sat on it, he thought about it and we discovered the, or he thought about the twelve sixty-three, twelve eighty-five Hot Metal Street, uh, which is the Wagner Ford site. So we met with the developers, George and I, and kind of went over the process and they seemed, um, like they would like to apply for it. Um, I think it's important to note that there is no local match required. And the minimum amount is two hundred thousand, the maximum amount is four million from the state. We're going to be asking for four hundred fifty thousand for soil remediation. And part of the DECD likes to see is, um, they're encouraging public-private partnerships with this would be, um, of us being kind of the grant writer and recipient and then kind of passing through funds to the developer.
Anybody have questions? Yeah, me too. I'll let you go because I might've asked him.
So if we're applying for the grant, um, is it the town that will be overseeing the progress? Or is it going to be just moved on to the developer and they're in charge of the soil remediation?
So they would be doing it. We, we would have our grant kind of reporting documented, um, but they, we wouldn't be like doing it ourselves now.
I have a, oh, do you have a follow-up to that, Chris?
I was just, um, curious as to what the timeframe.
Yeah, so, um, so grant application is due in March. They have kind of, um, I think it's around Ju, mid-June, early July is when they would award them. Part of the contract, the grant says that they can't reimburse, it's a reimbursement grant for the, um, for the money, but they can't do for any things, um, before the date of the signed contract. So it'd be going forward from there. So that was one of the questions that we did bring up to the developer because previously, uh, Stephen had mentioned in his, um, report that they are getting going and ready to kind of go on that. Um, so I kind of wanted to make them aware that, that the funds would only be for things forward from the date that the DECD contract is signed and they were aware of that as well. I don't have an exact timeline of kind of how that would delay or if they would go forward and then kind of go with reimbursements from when they sign the contract.
So, so I asked, this question's kind of an agenda prep, um, because we, it's on our land, correct? It's Wagner Ford's land. And, um, so kind of it sounds like we're just being good neighbors because we have access to this grant, but we don't really have any o, obligation other than the greater good to take care of this remediation.
Yeah, so it, because the Brownfield municipal grant is, um, only available for municipal municipalities and municipal entities, we have to be the one to kind of fill out the application and be the one to apply for it. So the, a developer can't go to the state and apply for this specific Brownfield municipal grant program themselves.
So does that hold them to any, um, like prevailing wage kind of comp?
That's what I was going to ask.
Any comp, because.
Prevaling wage part, uh, uh, I can do research on that part, um, when we're doing it. There's a couple kind of gar, completing guarantees, um, and, and other items like that on the deed that they might have to put in. Um, and then there's a pledge to not sell the property for ten years.
By them? Like, I, I guess the question is, we're, we're kind of being nice to help them with this because we have access. So we're using town resources to clean up, which is, I think, a good thing, I guess, depending on the balance of how much resources. But, um, where, where do we come into play as being on the hook for anything that happens there? And how do we know or follow up that they've used the four fifty for the cleanup and not for something else? And how do we know or follow up that they've used the 450 for the cleanup and not for something else? Do we get accounting reports as a follow-up?
Yeah, so I haven't actually done one of these in the past.
Well, you guys know grants, I don't.
Yeah, I haven't done one of these, but it's a, it's a reimbursement grant, so they would have to submit.
Okay.
Kind of itemized.
I've done one for 3.2 million, so I know a fair amount about these.
Okay.
I'd say it's, it's, I wouldn't characterize it as we're doing it as a, as a good neighbor. The word will get out among the development community that we're doing this and it's, it's totally the, the cool thing to do. Glad we've got the resources to do it and I'm really hopeful that it's approved because it would be a great message for the town and then the type of partnership that we want to do more often, I think.
I think the intent of the program was to create funding so the communities could coordinate and facilitate economic development on sites that were, you know, like the Wagner Ford where it's like, oh, who wants to take over all those oil, you know, bills and all that? So I, I think it's the perfect use for it.
And even if it wasn't a reimbursement grant, if they were, they have to report on the grant. And if they didn't use all the funds or they used it for them, they would have to pay back the funds that were not used in an appropriate way. But as you said, they'll submit and they'll only get the funds back reimbursed that they used in accordance to what the grant writes. Do they have to use specific contractors to remediate it according to the grant?
That I didn't see in there, but when we go through the application part and all that, I'll make sure to kind of point that out to them. And through the Ds, so what we've done in the past with some DCD grants is after it's awarded, if we're selected, there'll be kind of a meeting of DCD to go over some details like that and go over the contract.
So I was going to ask if you've already been in touch. It sounds like you haven't with DECD before you submit. Will they accept questions before you submit the application?
I have reached out to them one question to see if Simsbury has ever gotten one and we haven't. But I can certainly send questions to them and hopefully they'll answer them.
I, I support the project and I appreciate the background.
I do have one or two questions following up. Who determines the amount of remediation that is necessary on the site?
Yeah.
It's a phase one, then a phase two and so on and so forth. Those have already been completed, have they not?
They, I, they have at least a phase one because you need that for the application.
Right.
So when we sat down with the developer and I laid out the, the 200,000 minimum and the 4 million maximum, they were the ones to kind of, as I said, around that four, 450 amount. So I wouldn't know how they came up with that, but that was the number that they felt comfortable landing on.
Okay, but they have to expend the fine, the funds for remediation. So if there's only, let's say, 300,000 of remediation necessary, that, that would be a give it back type scenario?
I would imagine that I can, I'll reach out to the state and ask that part. I would imagine just because of the reimbursement part, then we wouldn't like to be giving a chunk of money and then have to give it back to the state. We just would use up everything allocated to us.
And then just as a segue to the future, as we know, we have the commuter lots is what we typically call them locally. I just wanted to acknowledge publicly, this is something we could potentially also pursue for that usage in the coming years.
That's the idea.
Yep. So this is like putting our toe in the water, but just big picture wise, that's part of.
And like he said, gets the word out and people are like, oh, they're willing to do this.
Well, that's just goodwill. It's economic development.
Right, correct.
So they like, they like shovel-ready projects. So for that parking lot, we'd have to kind of sit and think about what we're going to do for that part. But they also do funding about twice a year. So we'll have, we'll have plenty of opportunities to go for that.
Right, okay, great.
So before, before I read the motion, I just, we, we did this on a couple, how, it's, we're, it says we're appropriating it, but we don't know what the appropriation is at this point in time because it's, right? Is, should we still be appropriating it without knowing? Does that make sense? Because they have to submit for reimbursement.
Through the grant, we, all our other like reimbursement grants are the same wording for the packet.
Why, no, but this one's 450,000. That's right. That's why I'm, I'm just asking, just asking.
I think you can move that to when we have to appropriate it. I don't see any reason I'd net over it. I'd, I'd be willing to vote on it without saying we're going to.
I mean, I don't, I'll do it, but I just, we don't, we don't know how much it is yet, right? So should we say we're going to appropriate it until?
They're just asking for this motion here so that they don't have to come back to us again once it's all approved. We, we already know that it's happening. Whatever those, the grants funds are here and it covers it. But if you're concerned about that.
It might be nice to know how much it costs and what.
Sure, they'll be able to tell the First Electman anytime you ask a question.
Well, if somebody wants to, I don't, I'm not trying to make trouble. I just, because it's a lot of money. And so I'll ask for a motion effective February 10th, 2025 to submit a grant application to the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development's Office of Brownfield Remediation and Development to authorize Town Manager Mark Nelson to execute the grant application. Move to accept the grant and to authorize Town Manager Mark Nelson to execute all documents related to the grant award. I'll further move to appropriate the grant funds and recommend said appropriation to the Board of Finance as long as we get a report back to us as to what happened.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, there you go. Okay, the la-, the last is approved revised public gathering permit. So anybody have questions on this? I do have one question.
Sorry, it took so long.
Did you say a course?
I, I have, I have.
Okay, you could, you go.
It's a very, very small one. I, I, I love the fact that this was redone and stuff like that, but this is just a, a small thing. We, we have this funny issue with like the, the letterhead on our, or sometimes it shows up, right? And other times it doesn't. We just need to sort of figure that, that part out. See how like town of Simsbury is all wonky and stuff up there. If we're going to publish the form, it should be right. It's only, it only happens sometimes. And then the remainder of the form, this is going to sound overly, this, that's, that's where the, that's where the budget money went.
You mean like this, it's all wonky?
Yes, yeah, it's funny.
What is it?
See how like it prints all weird, like the top of it, like looks all weird.
So it's because the font isn't installed in Adobe and that's why it's not rendered.
We use the Daniela font and sometimes even when we get new computers in town, the people, you can tell who has a newer computer.
So I'm just bringing it up, especially if we're going to promulgate a new form. And then to that end, you know, just the font here, I just think it should be Times New Roman. I love Garamond. I think it's neat, but when it's italics, it also looks weird. And just from an accessibility standpoint, old people are the ones that are filling out this form. I know what you do it. It's just, it's hard, it's hard to read. So.
We agree.
Standard Times New Roman or something like that, or, or whatever the town decides.
I like Libri is my tone, too.
Perfect. I'm just, I'm just saying, you, you even see what I'm saying, even though it's italic slant is weird. So content wise, I have no concerns. I think it looks great. I, I think it's form fillable and all the rest, so.
But I agree wholeheartedly with the accessibility. And are you calling me out because I fill these out?
No, no, I should have said that. Experience is.
Experience, yeah.
I had a question that I asked when this first came around and it was about the number of parking attendees. And I might've been in agenda prep, but we're saying that we need a parking plan for over 200. And I thought we, A, talked about 100 and also figuring out how many spaces are really available on Iron Horse. Remember that kind of conversation? So, so do you?
I remember. I don't remember getting a response though.
We remember it as well. And, and if you could amend it to the approval to the 100, you're absolutely right, Chair. We, we meant to make that 100. We can make it 100.
Okay, does that sound reasonable to you guys? Okay, all right.
Nice job.
Ooh, with it here.
I like the content, contact phone numbers are on the relevant departments too. Like this is clean.
Wait, really?
It's clean. And now it'll go on our new website. Thank you for your support on that prior item there. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, ask for a motion effective February 10th, 25 to revise a public gathering application as presented.
As amended.
As amended.
It says, oh, as amended. Gee, I told you it's been a long week. As amended.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Selectman Beal.
I'll go second.
Can I, thank you, Selectman Yaisley. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public gathering permit is done. And now we're at the minutes. So before we go to the minutes, I do want to make a comment. I made this earlier today. And Tom, we're, we, we may talk about this at Agenda Prep, but I know that Susan Messina brought up conversations on the minutes. Heather and I remember multiple conversations on minutes over the last board. So I think we just really need to revisit what we want our minutes to reflect. But one of the things I noticed that we had as kind of a, as a caveat balancing act, whatever, was that we would keep the timing of each section so that if you wanted to go back and watch it, you could find the time that that discussion happened. And that's not.
It's right here.
It's not in all the sections, though.
Oh, that's cool.
I emailed the clerk this morning and asked reminded to do that.
Will she update this one to reflect that? Because there was a lot of conversations in here.
When it gets amended, I do it so I can go and do it.
You have to go to that? That's not, that's not a fun job, but.
I thought there was a clerk that was doing this.
Yeah.
The clerk does the, the normal minutes, but when it's a quick amendment, I, I'm right here, so I write it down.
Yeah, but you, you're not, are you the one who's going to have to go and put the times in or would the clerk go back and do that?
We could, we could pay the clerk to do it if you'd like.
Only, only the clerk could do it. That's, that's my direction. I don't, I don't want anybody in my, no.
Yeah, that's my point.
And, and, and if I could, Chair, if you could pass it by motion, if you're directing the commission clerk as well, because it really would help us to have it on the record what the board wants the commission clerk to do because we're not giving the commission clerk direction because the commission clerk is your commission clerk.
Well, we've asked, we've asked for this. I thought this was implemented in the past, so it seems to have not happened. It seems to have fallen off somewhere along the line.
What the town manager is trying to say is it's going to help both the clerk and the town manager's office enforce what our direction is and that it's not staff directing.
So I'm going to ask for a motion to make sure that the time, date, the timestamp is included in each section.
On, on the beginning of each agenda.
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now on that note, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes from January 27th, 2025.
So moved.
Only one comment that, that were Mr. Antonio comments, the days until spring. I believe the groundhog only a few days later.
Correct.
Six more weeks. No, no other comment.
Yeah, is that, is that something?
I do not accept your friendly amendment.
But mine were the calendar days till spring, whereas the groundhog is a.
I love that that's the.
Send the memo to Phil and.
I love that that made it into the minutes.
Okay.
With an exclamation point.
Yeah, I know. I didn't put that.
You were excited.
Okay, all those in favor, as amended, if that is.
I withdraw my motion.
All those in favor to the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have to, I'm going to ask for a motion. See, can I make that modification now? Because it's after 8 o'clock. That was only to add agenda items.
Well, see, we don't have to modify the agenda. We're just, we're just saying what the motion.
Clarifying what the.
Okay, I got you. I got you. So again, I ask for a motion to move into executive session with the six members of the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of discussing the process for the town manager's annual performance review and, where's the wording that I had? And to include initial performance discussion.
Do we need to acknowledge this?
I don't know what.
Just because it's on our agenda before.
No, we never do. Unless you want to.
No, I don't want to.
No, no, it's only if you have a question on it.
Don't.
Okay, so now you lost my place. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are in executive session. We will.
For over 40 years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education.
And live broadcasts.
SCM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings and celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SCM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
SCM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SCM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth. And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SCM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
SCM is crucial for keeping our community connected.
SCM isn't just here to broadcast local events. They're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us. Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that SCM continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the QR code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution.
Counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government.
Come together.